Good evening. I'm Carolyn Wright, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 23rd day of February 2021. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it is impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, would you please take the verbal role, and then we'll be asking Board members participating remotely to state where they are participating from. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In School Board chambers is Chairwoman Wright, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems. Participating via Zoom is Ms. Holtz, Ms. Owens, Ms. Franklin, and Ms. Manning.
So would our colleagues kindly state where they are participating from?
This is Jennifer Franklin. I'm participating from my house.
Thank you.
This is Jessica Owens. I'm participating from my home.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
Nadia Holtz is here.
And Mrs. Holtz for the record. Participating from...
In the school building.
And Mrs. Manning.
I'm participating in Virginia Beach.
You ladies. Okay, I ask you now to all join me for a moment of silence. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one Asian, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to the Public Awards and Recognitions part of the program, and I turn it over to Mrs. Melnick.
Good evening. I am School Board Vice Chairwoman Kim Melnick. Before we move forward this evening, I would like to take a moment to recognize the Virginia School Boards Association School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, which was declared by the Governor to be February 15th through 19th, 2021. Two very important individuals fulfill this role for us as a board: Regina Toni Otto, Clerk of the Board, and Susan Kype, Deputy Clerk of the Board. This week was created to build awareness of the role that School Board clerks play in assisting School Board members, superintendents, and our schools. These amazing women are our official record keepers of Board meetings and proceedings. They are present at each of our Board meetings, and they work to assist the Board with a variety of items, including scheduling, presentations, data retrieval, problem solving, and more. We are stronger as a Board due to their work ethic and professionalism. We would like to formally present both Ms. Toni Otto and Mrs. Kype with an official plaque as a small token of our appreciation for their tireless dedication. Thank you for everything you do to assist us and the Division each and every day.
Okay, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. We were able to recently recognize these ladies at the time of their reappointments, just in January, but this has a little... It's just nice to have this week set aside, too. So we thank you all again. So that leads us to adoption of the agenda. And in terms of modifications, we do have... We will be, for the benefit of the public who is just joining us now, our workshop was suspended at 5:30 and will be resumed at conclusion of the formal meeting. And that would be item... Agenda Item 17, I believe. So are there any other modifications? Okay, hearing none. Please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we need a motion and a second.
Yes, I just caught that. Thank you. So motion to approve, Mrs. Felton, and a second, Mrs. Hughes. Okay, now please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you all. So that brings us to the Superintendent Report. Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing from you.
Yes, ma'am. And good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board. So here are a few items of interest for you and our families to know this evening. To begin, as a quick reminder, Friday, March 5th will be a regular instructional day, both in person and virtual, for all students and staff. Although the official school calendar indicates that March 5th may be a staff day, it also has the caveat on it that that would only be used if students were receiving in-school instruction five days a week. Since students are currently receiving instruction four days a week, March 5th will be a regular workday for employees. Any staff originally just scheduled to be off March 5th will be receiving a separate communication about their work week. Second, don't miss out on our second online forum about community safety, which will be hosted by our School Resource Officers, also known as SROs. This will be held Wednesday, February 24th at 6:00 PM. And the SROs will be talking about car seat safety, bike and skateboard safety, and driving safety. To register, just visit vbschools.com. After registering, you'll get a confirmation email which contains information about joining the webinar. Third, the next installment of our Family Connection Series will feature a presentation about resources available to help families recognize the most common warning signs of mental illness and how to respond effectively. The Zoom webinar will be held Wednesday, March 10th at 6:00 PM. To register for this, please visit vbschools.com and click on the event's banner. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining this Wellness Series webinar. At number four, I mentioned during our last Board meeting that February is School Board Appreciation Month. As a School Division, we're extremely grateful for this Board's continued dedication and commitment to every student in Virginia Beach, but let's not take my word for it. Let's see what our students have to say. I echo the sentiments of that one person in particular. He said, "Thank you, School Board people."
I loved it.
We do appreciate everything that you do. And as another token of that appreciation, Board members, as you know, in the past, there have always been some small tokens of appreciation from our art department. And we have that again. I think some of you have discovered those, and so you've got those with you. For those of you who have not yet discovered those, those are down in Room 113. Again, a token of our appreciation and our thanks to Mr. Buener and the fabulous art teachers and students who helped put those together for you as a sign of their appreciation, we ask you to please pick those up after the meeting tonight in Room 113. And if you're unable to because you're not here, please know those will be in Ms. Toni Otto's office for you at your convenience. And with that, I turn it back to you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Okay, approval of meeting minutes. We have three here. So we will take these one at a time. And bear in mind, if any of you missed any of these as we proceed, when it comes to your vote, February 2nd Special School Board Meeting. Any modifications to these minutes? Hearing none, motion to approve, Mrs. Felton, a second, Mrs. Anderson. Discussion. Please all show your approval with a raised hand, in-person and Zoom participants. Ms. Holtz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, 9B is the February 9th Regular School Board Meeting, February 9th, 2021. Any modifications to these minutes? Hearing none, motion to approve, Mrs. Riggs, a second, Mrs. Hughes. Discussion. Please show your approval with a raised hand.
Ms. Holtz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Our remaining, Item C, February 16th Special School Board Meeting. That would be just last week. Any modifications to these minutes? Okay, hearing none, motion to approve, Mrs. Melnick, and a second, Mrs. Anderson. Discussion. Please show your approval with a raised hand.
Nadia Holtz's hand is up.
Thank you. And Ms. Franklin, how do you vote? We have a yes. Okay, we have a unanimous vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you all. Item Agenda 10. Madam Clerk, would you confirm my understanding that we have no Agenda speakers this evening?
That is correct, Madam Chair. We do not have any speakers for Agenda items.
All right. With that, we will move straight ahead to our Consent Agenda, Agenda Item 11. And I will announce these as part of the consent... Tonight's Consent Agenda. Well, I will turn it over to actually to Mrs. Melnick at this point for a series of resolutions.
Oh. Okay, so we have four resolutions, and we will start with Mrs. Holtz.
Excuse me, one question.
For you... Okay, thank you.
The resolutions. Fine Arts in Our Schools Month, March 2021. Whereas the Fine Arts Programs in Virginia Beach City Public Schools provides curricula, co-curricula, and extracurricular experiences in art, dance, music, and theater arts for all student members of the school community and for the Virginia Beach community at large. And whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the importance of fine arts to all our students, not only while they are in school, but also throughout their lives. And whereas art, dance, music, and theater arts are now and have been a vital part of the curriculum and instruction of the public schools of Virginia Beach. And whereas the month of March has been designated Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in the Schools Month by their national associations. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the month of March 2021 as Fine Arts in Our Schools Month in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach expresses its appreciation to our fine arts educators for advancing, enhancing our lives and the lives of our children through art, dance, music, and theater arts. And be it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this Board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach in this 23rd day of February 2021.
The resolution for Women's History Month. Whereas since 1987, the United States has formally recognized March as National Women's History Month. And whereas every woman has a story to tell and gifts to share with the world regardless of race, class, and ethnic background, and have made historic contributions to our schools, community, and nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, political, and social role in every sphere of American life through their service as a significant portion of the labor and volunteer force. And whereas women have been traditionally underrepresented as leaders in areas of business, science, technology, and government. And whereas today's children have the opportunity to learn about the significant contributions of women as leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also as leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all. And whereas the School Division's Strategic Framework, compassed to 2025, calls upon our staff, students, and community to support a culture of growth and excellence for all people. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the month of March 2021 as Women's History Month in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all students, schools, and citizens to celebrate the many contributions and accomplishments of women in our community and our nation through participation in Women's History Month activities. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this Board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, this 23rd day of February 2021.
Good evening. Resolution for National School Social Work Week, March 7, 2021. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers help identify and remove environmental barriers to learning, thus allowing students to reach their full potential. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers are committed to mobilizing families, schools, and community resources to enable students to learn and fully benefit from their educational program. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers are valuable members of the multidisciplinary team serving schools, providing a wide range of services to students, parents, and staff. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers use their expertise in child development, community resources, mental health, and crisis intervention to develop and implement interventions to support education success. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers assist the most vulnerable children and adolescents, including children with disabilities, children living in homelessness, children living in poverty, pregnant teens, suicidal teens, trudens, and other at-risk children. And whereas this shared approach to assisting students promotes students' learning and helps guide students to high school graduation and post-secondary experiences and the skills necessary to be productive citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognize the second full week of March 2021 as National School Social Work Week in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this Board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 23rd day of February
Read Across America. Whereas the City of Virginia Beach stands firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that education investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas National Education Associations, NEA, Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's 117th birthday on March 2, 2021, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach calls on all citizens of Virginia Beach to assure that every child is in a safe place, reading together with a caring adult on March 2, 2021. And be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses NEA's Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities that improve the reading abilities of all children. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this Board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 23rd day of February 2021.
Thank you. There are no additional consent items. So with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve these resolutions. Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Anderson. All in favor, please show a raised hand.
Ms. Holtz, how do you vote? Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the action part of the agenda, beginning with Item A, Personnel Report Administrative Appointments. Beginning with a motion to approve, Mrs. Hughes, a second, Mrs. Melnick. Discussion. Okay, hearing none. The Chair calls for a vote with a raised hand. Affirmative vote.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Dr. Spence, do you have any appointment to share with us?
I do, yes, ma'am. We have one. I'd like to recognize Christina Golden. Ms. Golden has served with distinction in the Chesapeake Police Department as a Uniform Patrol Officer, PIO, a criminal investigation detective, and an ethics and conduct investigator. And we're pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next Coordinator of Security and Safe Schools in the Office of Safe Schools. Congratulations to Detective Golden.
Thank you. We join in those congratulations. All right, so... And we did vote on that, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we did. It was a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to a few bylaws here. Action Item B, Policy Review Committee Recommendations, beginning with B1, Bylaw 128, Committees, Organizations, and Boards, School Board Members', Assignments. And Mrs. Lynetti is here to point out the proposed revisions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Kami Lynetti, School Board Legal Counsel. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'm going to be presenting the ongoing saga of getting to get these three bylaws through the School Board. First one is 128, which you have seen many times in the last couple months. With the last School Board meeting, you asked us to take it back to Policy Review. At that time, we were... Among the many changes that we had, we were recommending to add an Agenda Planning Committee, which then would require that we would amend this Bylaw section. I think at that point, we would have proposed it as Bylaw Section 4, if I'm correct. After going back to the Policy Review Committee meeting, we had some discussions about how best to handle the Agenda Planning process. There was some research done by various School Board members. And Mrs. Melnick came forward with a proposal that we do something similar to what City Council did, which is a standing group of the Chair and the Vice Chair, working with the Superintendent, would then go forward with the agenda, bring it to the School Board, and we would follow that process. That would be the recommendation we're bringing to you, and another bylaw, which is Bylaw 139, Agenda Planning. As a result of that recommendation, we have then taken out the recommendation we brought to you at the last School Board meeting, to have an Agenda Planning Committee. So we would not be recommending Agenda Planning Committee as a standing committee. The other changes that you'll see in here, we've mentioned several times, we've looked at assignments of committees. We didn't do a significant amount of changes. We changed around the piece on considerations in Bylaw Section A 3. They don't appear now in numbered section, but they do consider as general considerations. They continue to read in there. So it's pulled out, but it's actually incorporated into the paragraph above that. A little bit of work that we've mentioned before on the Committee Chair duties on there. And we also noted in A8 that there is a standing committee procedures, which you adopted at the prior School Board meeting. That's recognized here. Going on further with this particular bylaw, we have come to the one, as we mentioned before, the Governance Committee added a new Section K, which reads "Established Protocol and Procedure Subject to Review by the School Board Regarding School Board Meetings and Other Matters Relating to the School Board." That is an additional duty that we've added onto the work of the committee. Going a little bit further, there are a couple of changes, minor changes, having to do with recognizing the voting procedures. What is significant and does really need to get passed is under Section F, School Division Standing Committees. We had to make a couple of changes to these. We have moved out the 403 Plan Oversight Committee. It had been, I believe, an ad hoc committee, and then it had also been an outside committee. There have been changes in how we do this. It is no longer an outside committee because you do not work with the city on this anymore. It's strictly a School Division Committee. So we've moved that up to Section F, that would be FB, as 403B Plan Oversight Committee. Under G, which talks about your outside committees, organizations, and boards, we are no longer appointing anyone as a liaison to the Access College Foundation at their request. So we have substituted under G1, the Green Run Collegiate Charter War, which we've always had someone representing as a liaison, but we've not formally put that into our organizations. We've added in Section G8, where it had read the 403B Plan Oversight Committee, because we moved that up to the prior section, which was Section F. We have substituted the Deferred Compensation Board, which is a new joint board that you have with the city, and putting that down in that subsection. So those do need to get passed because there's boards that you have appointed liaisons when you adopted your committee assignments. That is currently the recommendation, the PRC, on all the recommendations involving the different changes to Bylaw 128. Are there any questions?
Procedure, should I first... We should first put out the motion and the second, correct? Okay, so... And I'll remember that for the ensuing ones. So a motion to approve before there's discussion, Mrs.? Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Anderson. Okay, discussion or questions? No Zoom participants, we're good? And we're going to vote on these one at a time, I presume?
Yes, ma'am, because then actually I'll do each one.
All right, then, hearing no discussion. The Chair calls for a vote. Please show your affirmation with a raised hand, please. Ms. Holt, how do you vote? Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have nine ayes and we have two nays with Ms. Holtz and Ms. Manning voting no. The motion did pass with, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So there is a correction, ma'am? We were doing affirmatives, so let's just reiterate. So affirmatives have voted, and you noted who the affirmatives are?
Yes.
Right. So now, so now to be clear.
So those who voted no are Ms. Weems, Ms. Holtz, and Ms. Manning.
Okay. And we will get, let's, future nays, please wait till we get to that, that part or point. So please announce the final tally?
Oh, so the final tally, I do apologize, is those in favor were Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Melnick, and Madam Chair. Those who voted in the negative were Ms. Holtz, Ms. Weems, and Ms. Manning.
Thank you. Okay, now this is B2, Bylaw 136, Open Meetings and Closed Meetings. So I'll first entertain the motion, and then we'll have Council explain and discussion. So a motion to approve. Mrs. Hughes, and a second, Mrs. Anderson. All right, Mrs. Lanetti.
Bylaw 136 is titled "Open Meetings and Closed Meetings." This, again, is another bylaw that has multiple sections, and it's a rather complicated bylaw. The first recommendation, which you've seen before, and we have not changed since going back to the Policy Review Committee, happens under Section B, Closed Meetings. It is in addition to the first paragraph under B1, which talks about the procedure. If you want to challenge going into a closed meeting, how you do that. This has not changed since the last three times I presented this to you, so that will remain the same. Section 3, if I'm correct, I think we've tweaked some of the language on this, 3 is confidentiality of closed meeting items. This would read, "School Board Members who access or discuss information or materials in preparation for or during closed meetings will maintain all such information in a confidential manner. School Board Members will not record or copy such confidential information. Unauthorized persons may not be provided access to confidential information. Personal notes taken while preparing for or attending closed meetings should be restored as soon as the closed meeting matters are concluded, or should be turned over to School Board, the School Board Clerk or School Board Legal Counsel, to maintain in a confidential manner. In accordance with applicable record-keeping requirements, failure to, I'm sorry, I was continuing this last sentence, failure to protect the confidentiality of closed session material or information may constitute sufficient reason to restrict that School Board Member from participating in future closed sessions or serving on School Board Committees that handle confidential information." The next, Section C, has to do with electronic communication meetings. Obviously, this has become significantly more important this last year than we've had in prior years. The addition in this section would be to add a new subsection 3, which would read, "The allowable reasons for going to communication, electronic communication meetings will include, under other conditions allowed by the Governor or the Virginia General Assembly and adopted by the School Board." I will tell you, this, there is a bill going through the General Assembly. It is continuing to change. This, we may go back to you later in the year, once we get the final version of that. But this recognizes that you have that ability to do the electronic meetings in accordance with the Governor's orders, because currently, the way the law reads, you are not allowed to do it unless it's an emergency situation. The only reason you can continue to do it now is because the Governor declared an emergency situation, it tacked on to the budget bill last year, so that's why they need to get an amendment change of law. All this is doing is recognizing to the circumstances, you could have that. We would all be, also be asking to amend and add a subject, a Section C9, which recognizes that School Board Committees can follow the same procedures, because most of your School Board Committees already have three School Board Members on it, which constitutes a meeting. I'm not going to go back through this next section in great detail, because I've explained it several times, but D is Remote Location Participation. This is when you are not in the room where the majority of the School Board Members are, as we have a couple of people tonight doing that. The first section has to do with Temporary or Permanent Disability or Other Medical Condition That Prevents Physical Attendance. This is meaning you cannot come in because of medical condition. When you first adopted this in 2014, you did not add the extra restrictions that, the extra conditions that were allowed by the General Assembly. You simply said remote participation would only be allowed twice for every School Board meeting, which is what the law actually said. If you had a medical condition, you could put other restrictions on it. This particular section recognizes when you have an extra, a medical condition and a disability, that you have the ability to participate remotely without the restrictions. It, we did add a section in here that if it became disruptive or was interfering with the ability of the School Board or the School Board Committee to do their work, that you could vote then to limit those restrictions. The second form of, of remote participation is under D2, which is called Personal Matter Prevents Physical Attendance. This is not when you have a medical condition. This is when you are on vacation, and you're choosing to stay home for another reason. The law does actually limit the amount of times you can do this. It limited it to two times a year, or 25% of the meetings that you have during the year. That will remain the same in there. We also notified, we clarified in the section that for your purposes, if you attend a regular School Board meeting, there would be two times for that. If you're on another committee that is subject to the Freedom of Information, that you could do two times for that School Board meeting. So we wouldn't count two times for all your meetings. So that's the clarification we put in that section. And in the final section, you'd have to go down to C4. C4 is talking about remote participation committees under there. I'm sorry, it's actually C5. C5, and this is what we sent back to the, the PRC. PRC has knocked this around several times, come back to you, and this is the current recommendations they have. The School Board Members may participate from a remote location in any closed session meeting as long as the School Board Member can ensure that all confidential information cannot be accessed by unauthorized persons. School Board Members may not participate in student discipline committee hearings remotely. And then would be subsection 6, Conditions Regarding Remote Location Participation May Be Suspended or Modified in accordance with applicable School Board Action or Resolution, Governor's Action, or the Virginia General Assembly Action. That actually, normal bylaw procedure allows you to, by two-thirds, vote to oversuspend a bylaw. So again, the restriction, the PRC's recommendation is on number 5, that you would be allowed to participate in remote location closed session. So this is what you sent back last time, and we've looked at it. PRC came forward with this recommendation. I know that there are some people that have some discussion they want to have on that, so I'll throw it back out to the School Board at this time.
Mrs. Melnick.
For, you said it's C5?
C5, yes.
I would just like to offer some substitute language and strike anything beyond, I would like it to read.
A motion hasn't yet been made, has it?
Yes, there was made.
Thank you. I would like to, I would like to offer some substitute language that the, that School Board Members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session meeting, period.
I know this was emailed out to School Board Members on Monday. You had a written copy of it. Does anyone need to see?
I think I need to ask for a second. Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson, okay. I'm sorry, Mrs. Lanetti.
I'm sorry. Does anyone need to see a physical copy of that? My understanding is it would read the amendment offered by Mrs. Melnick, is School Board Members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session, and then she would strike all for the language that currently is in the Agenda package.
Can we discuss? Yes. Mrs. Weems.
Oh, this is, it's okay.
Did you?
So this went back to PRC, and who's on PRC? Ms. Riggs, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Anderson. So I'm assuming they discussed this, or did it not get to y'all before?
It was a pretty long discussion.
Okay, so this was discussed, and y'all's recommendation is that you can attend closed meetings remotely. Okay. So.
First of all, let me, let me say something about that real quick. We recommended it because we wanted to bring this up to the entire School Board to speak about it. That's why.
Okay, I guess, that's an interesting, interesting comment. But, yeah, I mean, you know, we've, I can understand not going in a closed session remotely because your camera could be in your house, and your child could hear it, or you could be somewhere else, and someone in the house could hear it. But, I mean, we had a situation a few months ago where several of us missed a closed session, and the vote in the closed session was not appreciated by those who were able to vote, and so we brought it back and revoted. I just don't want to get in that habit of doing that, when we have one or two people just, someone's sick, someone's sick for two or three weeks, they just can't be there. I just trust that if you're going to not have the integrity to keep confidential information confidential, whether you're there in person or in your camera, you're not going to keep it confidential. So I don't think that being remote is going to cause you to act any differently. And I think that if we can trust, if you know you're going to have to be remote in a closed session, you go in your, you know, bedroom or in your office at home, and you shut the door, and you make sure that you're keeping everything confidential. I do like the language that says if, if it is found out from your colleagues that things are getting leaked out, that you will be asked not to participate anymore. And I think that's, I think that's, that's a great idea, because we've got to be able to self-regulate and put pressure on each other, and I think that solves any problem. And I have no problem saying to a School Board Member, that leaked out when you were at home, therefore you're not responsible enough to keep it confidential. So I'm, I'm going to support this, because I think in some cases, you try your hardest, and we're going to get to a closed session, that we really need everybody there, and everybody's vote. And if we have two or three absent, I don't want somebody to say, but they weren't there, so we got to revisit it and revote on it, because we didn't like the votes of the people that actually came in person. So, and I think just, the whole COVID is just going to put a whole different slant on meetings, and who can attend meetings, and I think that we're going to see a whole different, even after COVID lessens and restrictions lessen, I think remote participation is still going to be around for a long time. So I'm going to support this.
Mrs. Melnick, and then Mrs. Hughes.
So I think it's incumbent upon this body to preserve the integrity of closed sessions. And I think it's the one area where we cannot become complacent when it comes to COVID. We have a responsibility to, to the public. We, it, and we need to be present for closed sessions. Closed sessions are closed for a reason. We have sensitive personnel matters that we discuss. We have sensitive court cases, real estate transactions, and I think it is our duty to be present, to, and, and to not provide the opportunity for a misstep. Mrs. Lanetti, you and I have had a discussion about this. I would, I would appreciate you weighing in on this also. This, this has been very important to me from the beginning. Red flags went up on this, and I, and I don't often compare ourselves to City Council. I have, in another bylaw, and I'm going to do it again, City Council has been meeting for quite some time via WebEx, and they have not conducted a single closed session, and they have a lot of them. And they have bypassed all of their closed sessions, and from what I'm being told, Mark Stiles is not comfortable either with closed session via Zoom. And I don't know that I would want to be part of a group that participates in closed sessions via Zoom. I, I would probably remove myself in that case, but if you could weigh in, I would greatly appreciate it.
There are certain areas of the law that you have an absolute duty to maintain confidentiality, unless you've received consent from the individual who's authorized to consent student discipline is one of those. In fact, any student matter, unless you have the consent of the student, that information cannot be made public unless it meets one of the exceptions. So there would be a concern doing anything involving a student without, it would be difficult for me to ensure the parent, if they asked, or the adult student, was the matter kept confidential. I don't know that I could do that. You would individually have to be put under deposition or swear to it whether you cooperated with that. So that, that would be a difficult area for me. There are, depending on the type of employee matter, that could also be a concern for us if the matter was not kept confidential. You could run into problems under the Procurement Act if you are leaking out information. That's out there. Also in litigation, if matters were to be released outside, it might violate the confidentiality or attorney-client privilege that I have. If I share it with you as a client, and you have not shared it with somebody who's unauthorized, we can protect it. Once it's leaked out there, I can't protect that information. So that, the liability to you might be, although it may not technically cause, not something that the other School Board Members could discipline you for, you could cause liability to the School Division. So there is that ongoing concern with maintaining the confidentiality of a closed session.
It's, so the operative word is trust, and while I do trust my colleagues, when you're, when you're all together in one room, and you can vouch for, for everyone's whereabouts, that, that's one thing, but we just don't, we just don't know. I mean, someone could be in the room, in front of the camera, and I, and I, and I'm just, I feel very strongly about preserving the integrity of a closed session. And for that reason, I, I cannot support Section C7, five of Bylaw 1, 136, I mean, yeah, 136. I just cannot support that section. I'm okay with everything else, but I'd like that to be removed.
All right. Still speaking to the substitute motion, Mrs. Hughes.
I, I like it as written. I'm not a fan of the substitute motion, and the reason is, I don't think it matters whether you're in the same room or not. If someone's going to leak something, they're going to leak something. If they're not, they're not. We spend a lot of time talking about how we've had to learn new ways in the school, new ways to teach due to COVID and shutdowns. We have telemedicine now. I don't know that somebody doesn't walk into my doctor's office if I'm having a, a tele-visit with him. We do, we do bankruptcy hearings telephonically. We have conferences with clients telephonically. On this board, we have teachers who have, were former teachers, retired teachers, who have kept information confidential because of their students. We have attorneys. We have Ms. Owens, who works with youth. Everybody on this board understands keeping things confidential. I don't trust anyone less at home than I do here. I trust that my colleagues are adults and will keep things confidential, that they understand the nature of confidential information. But I also understand that, you know, and we live in a changing world. There are a lot of reasons why we're not here. We have had people on this board come down with COVID. We've had, we've had deaths in the family. We've had to travel for whatever reason. We have people who help out with elderly parents. We have a million reasons why we're trying to strike that, that work-life balance, and I don't think that we should have to choose between our families and our duty here when things come up. It is part of our duty to participate in these closed sessions, and we also have lives, and we're trying to strike that balance. Now, the reason that disciplinary hearings were an exception to this is, one, because a student up for disciplinary hearing, they should be able is one, because a student up for disciplinary hearing, they should be able to be in the room and look at someone when they're talking to them. But because it's only three, it's already a common practice for people to, to switch when necessary. So it just didn't seem to need to apply here. But there are other things where I really do think it applies. And I just, I don't want someone to not be able to participate because, because life has happened and we're not able to strike that balance. And I trust all of you to keep things confidential, so.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Melnick.
Mrs. Lanetti, um, if this, um, if this were to go through and we, we change the by, we keep, have the bylaw so that, uh, you have to be in person for closed sessions, uh, would it, would the, uh, two-thirds rule of, uh, changing a bylaw or two-thirds rule of relinquishing the bylaw, could that be done if a person had a reason? For example, um, a- and when we talked about this in our, in our little policy group, am I correct on the two-thirds rule?
That's correct. It's a bylaw, so it would require two-thirds of, or you can all, a supermajority vote to suspend it, take an action with some notice requirements and other things that have to happen.
Okay, so, so when we were in our, uh, policy committee meeting, I was selfishly thinking about the fact that I have a, 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 an elderly mother who is, uh, going downhill very fast. And, and selfishly thinking that, you know, with a seven-hour drive to get there, I could be stuck in a state seven hours away and couldn't get back here for a closed session meeting. And so selfishly, I was sa, I was thinking, you know, I don't wanna be, not be able to participate in some type of a closed session meeting because I'm there and I can't get back here in time, that type of thing. So, but if something like that were to happen where, where I had to be there because, uh, of my elderly mother being so incapacitated that I couldn't, you know, that I had to be there, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem appealing to this board and saying, would you mind suspending this bylaw for me so that I can participate in this, this one time? Um, I, I, that's why I'm in favor of, of the amendment. Because I think we should just leave it at that way. If something cata- catastrophic happened where somebody absolutely, it's a one-time thing. I wouldn't be asking for it every time. But, you know, if something really catastrophic happened, you know, and if the board didn't approve it two-thirds, okay, so be it. You know, judges wouldn't be able to participate. But I, I feel like, you know, with this two-thirds, uh, rule of being able to suspend the bylaw temporarily, um, you know, I, that's why I'm in favor of the amendment as it is. I think we need to leave it on the books. And, and maybe I would have to ask for it sometime, or maybe somebody else would have to ask for a two-thirds suspension sometime and maybe not. But I feel like, um, we should just leave it on the books right now as, um, no one can participate remotely. Um, and we'll leave it like that. And then we'll just see what happens if, if somebody ever has to in the future, um, ask for a suspension. So I'm, I am in favor of this amendment.
All, all right, we have t, the, the next two are, have yet to speak. So we have Mrs. Manning and then Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you.
So I think we're on about our third iteration of this policy. I think it was originally brought to us. And, and I did have some problems with the original language that I expressed, um, where, you know, basically board members could vote to decide who could participate, who couldn't. Um, and so I'm glad that was changed. And originally, you know, I, I, I just wanted it to be equal for everyone. Either everyone could participate or no one could, could participate in closed sessions. Um, and then it was sent back to, at our last meeting, it was sent back to PRC for them to look at it. And we were all supposed to give our input in advance, and I did. Um, and so this says PRC recommendations. Ms. Riggs said that it was just brought back to us to talk about. But when this is brought to us, it's, it's as a recommendation from the Policy Review Committee. So I'm really confused as to why, um, the Policy Review Committee recommended this, um, in that, I guess you met last week, but now all of a sudden it has changed. Um, I tend to agree with Ms. Hughes that we're all adults. And if someone is gonna disclose something that happened in a closed session, they're gonna do it whether we're remote or in person. Um, so I think we should, should trust one another. And, um, I, I, I'm not gonna support the substitute motion. I, I, I think that, um, the recommendation that was brought to us by the PRC originally, um, i- is sufficient. I think we're all adults and we should trust one another to, um, keep this information private. And the bylaw also states that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Franklin. And then Mrs. Rigs.
My concern, and I guess maybe I might be slightly confused, but my concern is that if you have a rigid bylaw where it says that, um, we absolutely cannot attend, um, you know, in a closed meeting, uh, via Zoom or, or externally, it, you know, I'm just afraid with that kind of rigidity in the, in the bylaw that, you know, a, a, any one of us could have a situation, a health scare, a, you know, whatever, uh, like Ms. Anderson right now with, with an age, you know, with an aging, um, parent. Uh, you know, I, I'm just worried that we are not allowing, um, any kind of leniency unless we have to go then and get a vote. And I think in those situations where we're in a position where we have to have a, a vote or, uh, you know, a request for some leniency, you know, you, if, if we're requesting, that probably means we've got a lot going on in that moment, either health-wise or whatever the case may be. And then you have to wait to find out if you have a vote on top of that. So I, I'm just concerned about having, um, a situation where there is no leniency for, for life happening, so to speak. Um, and maybe I'm confused about where the, the, the vote stands. So i- if you could please do me a favor and be very clear about what I would be voting on in terms of, because I know that we've got a substitute motion now. And but, um, it, so I, I guess what I'm saying is I, I'm concerned, um, that we would not have any type of, of opportunity to have, uh, a, a closed meeting session externally or via Zoom. So, 'cause again, life will happen. And when that, when it does, you just don't really have, you know, a lot of time to try and adjust or, or pivot. So, um, so yeah, that's, uh, that's my question, um, a- as well as my comment. And if we could just be clear about, um, what we're voting on then, when we, when it comes to a vote, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mrs. Franklin?
I've been sitting here thinking I should, for the benefit of the public, just to make clear that the present bylaw language and pre, and past precedent, precedent, this is not, this is not, the substitute motion just reaffirms what is present practice. So the board is not making this motion just, if that's clear. And I just thought the public is of that explanation, that presently now, present bylaw language, uh, prohibits Zoom participation in closed meetings.
Okay, so is the substitute motion then to?
Just continue doing that? I, I guess I'm confused about what the, the.
It hurts and it's to not, would act. It would actually read, the school board, let me clarify. The substitute motion made by Mrs. Melnick is that subsection C five would read, "School board members may not participate from a remote location at any closed session meeting." That is how the bylaw currently reads. What you have in front of you in your agenda package is the recommendation coming out of PRC, which adds the additional language and changes it from may not to may participate. So what Ms. Melnick is actually saying is not to amend this section at all.
Does that help? Okay. Now, I thought, and again, I thought, I think that was the right point to, to make, to offer clarity for the viewing public. Is that it for now, Mrs. Franklin?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Riggs.
Okay, to clarify my statement that I made earlier, um, and to clarify to Mrs. Weems and Mrs., um, uh, Manning, we discuss as, as the chair of the PRC, we discussed this at length. And not everybody was in agreement to it. And at least one of our members really felt like this should be brought up and recommended so we could discuss this as a school board body. That is why I said that, what I did. And so that is why we brought it forward. Because not everybody was in agreement with it. And we just felt like this needed a full discussion again of this entire school board. Because there are people that have different feelings about it. So that's my explanation and that's why we did that.
Okay, Mrs. Weems and then Mrs. Hughes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and maybe we need to really discuss this at retreat, committees and their recommendations. I find it unbelievable that a committee would make a recommendation that they don't believe in for the sake of discussion, because we were gonna discuss it anyway. It'd be like the Budget Committee recommending a two percent raise this year. None of us really believing in it, but for the sake of discussion. Your committee should vote for it. And if it's two-one, you bring forth the recommendation. And it should be a recommendation that the majority of your committee actually agreed on. So that's very confusing. But hopefully we can talk about that in the retreat, about the responsibilities of committees and recommendations and how that works. Um, yeah, I just don't think that I, I, I know I do not want to be in the situation of someone calling and saying, will you allow me to do it virtually? Because a catastrophic situation has occurred. Because then we're gonna get into judging what is serious enough to allow you to do it virtual. Is that as serious as your neighbor? Is that as serious as the one who's sick or the one who has a parent or the one who wants to go to the one-time national championship of their son? You know, we could come up with all these reasons. So I certainly do not want to go there. Um, again, if you're going to be an honest person and keep things confidential, you're going to do it whether you're in room one thirteen or if you're in your bedroom at home or in your living room at home. If you're going to leak information, you're going to leak it if you're sitting in there or if you're sitting at home. So I don't have any problem. And again, we are going to sometimes be voting on things that are very close. And I don't want to have my colleagues say, it was so close, two people couldn't attend because they had to take care of mom or sick child or they were sick. So therefore I'm not satisfied with the vote since two of my colleagues weren't there. So we're gonna bring it back up in two weeks and we're gonna re-vote. So let's let everybody participate. Let's stay honest. If you're not honest, you'll be asked to remove, be removed from, from any other confidential information. So I'm gonna not support this amendment and support the recommendation brought to us by the, by the committee.
So I, I'll just add some, some personal remarks before we get to Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Melnick, because I, I've weighed heavily on this. So I, first of all, fully support that, uh, equal tr, I don't want to get into us evaluating each case. So I was, for, for those who have made those remarks, I'm in full agreement. Uh, I think one of the responsibilities of the chair would be with a closed session, again, determined, depending on time sensitivity. If, if there are a number of absences, then postpone the closed session when feasible, when time allows. Uh, I know we've, society in general has made a, a lot of progress in the past year with, with Zoom. But it, it's still, is only in its infancy, really. I mean, it's, and I think, you know, I think of myself, if I were an employee with a grievance hearing or a personnel evaluation, I just don't, I personally am, am not quite there yet. I think the technology continues to evolve. And I think we can probably revisit this issue in another year or so. But I just feel for where we're at now as a society, it's, it's still the exception. It's still the norm for organizations to not have these closed sessions via Zoom. If you, and so, um, I, for me, my comfort level right now is keeping the status quo. But, you know, continuing, continuing to monitor this moving forward, to even see what comes, just what comes out of society, what comes out of the General Assembly, what comes out of our sister organizations in, in the next year or so. So that's where I'm at with this. Okay, Mrs. Hughes and then Mrs. Melnick.
I would just like to reiterate again, as Ms. Weems just said, whether you're in person or at home, that really isn't gonna determine whether or not you divulge things that are confidential. I think just the fact that the question was asked, can we decide to let somebody do this with a two-thirds vote, shows that we know that there could be a need for this. And one of the things that gave me heartburn about the previous language when this was brought up is that this could be decided unevenly. So I do think that there should be a bright line rule. And I'm not gonna be able to support the amendment. I really do think that, um, you should be able to participate remotely. And I also think that if we're gonna do that, number six needs to stay in there. Where if you divulge confidential information, you are no longer allowed to participate in closed sessions.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick.
So to Mrs. Franklin's point, rigidity should always, always apply to a closed session. Always. And I'd like to remind my colleagues that if it weren't for COVID, we, we get two opportunities a year to miss a meeting. The, it's clo, it's closed for a reason. And rule, closed session rules are already being broken right now. And I just cannot continue to, to provide opportunities for it to continue to happen. It is, like Mrs. Weems said, it already, it, it already happens. But I, I absolutely, um, I, I just, I'm absolutely opposed to, to closed sessions being remote. And, you know, we're appalled when, when we hear about instances in our schools where someone has hacked to Zoom meeting. And we know that those happen, we see it happening in our classrooms. Um, and I just cannot imagine being the person who, who, who the closed session is about, one of our employees, the personnel matter, Dr. Spence's evaluation. These are, these are private matters that need to be dealt with privately in person. And, and so, um, I ask that you seriously, seriously consider the, um, the sanctity of closed sessions and that we leave the, the bylaw, um, C five as, as written. Thank you.
Okay, trying to draw this to a conclusion to vote on the substitute motion, I see Dr. Spence in the queue.
I do, and I appreciate it. And I recognize, let me just say right at the front end of this, this is completely a board decision and discussion. But I, I feel like I at least have to speak on behalf of staff because we do have personnel conversations that take place in these closed sessions. As noted, mine, mine as well, but mine is not the only one, as you all know. Um, we have had at least thirty security updates to Zoom this year that we've had to do. Uh, you, Mrs. Melnick, you just recently referenced, um, you know, some situations that we've had. You're, you've been made aware of. You've gotten emails about them from constituents about, oh, this happened in my son's class. We don't want that to happen. Obviously, we're doing the best we can with the platform that's available to us to make, and, and we've made some shifts over to Google Meet and we've done some other things to try to make security breaches less likely. And we've done a good job with that. Very proud of our Department of Technology and the work that they've done. But they happen. And it, and I appreciate everybody's comments of just trust us, we're professionals, we're, we're not gonna make any mistakes. Um, but that doesn't mean somebody else won't do it for you. That doesn't mean somebody is gonna hack into that meeting and take everything you have and record it and put it on the web. And once that's done, you can't take it back. And so I'm just speaking on behalf of staff to say, I think that's a very bad idea. I would, I guess I would echo Mrs. Rice's comments, um, about the kind of infancy of these platforms and our use of them and understanding of them. We, again, we're, we're way further along, we, we, we were than a year ago, but that doesn't mean it's perfect. And, and these are significant legal matters that get discussed in some cases and personnel matters that can discuss. And I, I just have to speak on behalf of staff. And, and I would say, even for myself personally, I'm not gonna be comfortable conducting my evaluation with folks online. Um, and so, you know, I will happily delay as, as long as possible to ensure that that doesn't have to happen personally. But I'm, and I can't speak for staff, but I, I wanna advocate on their behalf in, in this instance. And I, just a reminder too, because I know you all have said, look, if you're, you know, you're gonna leak information, you're gonna leak information if you're. If you're not, you're not, we all have to trust each other. You're not doing this just for yourself. You're doing this for future boards as well. This is policy for direction for all boards, not just you all. You all might trust each other, but you have no idea who might get elected next and what their leanings around confidentiality. We we hope that wouldn't happen, but you know. So just remember, you're setting this for future boards as well. But anyway, the the first issue for me was the more pressing issue. And thanks for letting me speak, though.
Looks like Mrs. Owens.
Okay, I was going to one final ask of our Zoom participants. So Mrs. Owens, I'm told, Ms. Owens, I'm told.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I guess I have a question and kind of a comment. With the closed session amendment, are you considering people who are in the school administration building remotely considered remote or just people who are outside of the school administration building?
The actual information law says
Being in the same location where a majority of the school board member quorum of the school board members are, that's what counts is the room. So if you were outside in 113 or further down the hall in Einstein, that would still be considered remote because you were not in the room with the quorum of the school board members. In person, yes.
Problematic to me. I do feel like we need to be really careful with information in our closed sessions. I think the fact that we put that you can't participate closed sessions or you can't do the student disciplinary hearings closed session has to be weighed. We're saying that for whatever those reasons are, whether it's because the the students have the right to see your face when they're talking, although they could see your face on a a monitor. If we're saying that they have the right to make that decision, I would I would want to extend that same right to others who are being discussed during closed session and not say the students' rights to privacy or being able to see our faces is a higher level of rights than our staff members' rights to to have those same things. But the other piece for me is I I think that there should be a allowance to participate participate remotely in the closed session from inside the building. We're in we are in COVID times right now. So I think we need to be making our decisions as if we are in a pandemic. And there are times when for our own personal safety or for trying to maintain the safety of our colleagues, it would not be a good idea for us to be in the room. But we're still an elected official who has the right and duty to participate. And so if we are in the building separated, I I think we should be allowed to do that. And I I think that we can make the investment as a board to have the software to to make sure that that is protected and secured the same way therapists have software to make sure that their therapy sessions are not hacked within our building. I think that there should be technical ways to be allowed to be separated for safety in a pandemic or even not in a pandemic. If you're sick and you would like to participate, I think you should have a right to participate in the duty that you were elected to do, as long as you're in the building separated. And so I guess those are my two thoughts on it. I I could certainly support the motion if it allowed for in how if it allowed for a definition saying that if you are in the school administration building on our school administration devices, that that's not considered remote, that you are still in the same location as the rest of the board.
Yes, that the same possibility exists for hacking in the building as it does wherever you are. So that's what I'm saying. You you eliminate the technology piece. We're not going to be in COVID forever. And again, this is sensitive material that we're not going to provide the extra possibility that something can be hacked. I I really struggle with this conversation. I can't I just struggle with not not understanding the sanctity of a closed session. And the I word always it just pops up for me all the time. It is about integrity and that's very important to me. So I just ask that you support the amendment and leave. We just need to leave it the way it was. It was that way to begin with, and I don't understand why we had to change it. It it's important, and it's important to the public.
Anything else, Ms. Owens? Who was is that, Mrs. Franklin?
Manning.
Manning? What Mrs. First allow me, Ms. Owens, is anything else from you before we go to Mrs. Manning to try to wrap this up?
I don't know if there's a way, certainly won't be prior to this vote, but for us to be able to hear from somebody from our technical department, from Mr. Din or somebody else about the availability and security of in-house WebEx or zooming into a room, a phone on a phone from inside the building and the the level of security or not security for that piece. Certainly, again, I I don't want to us to be prioritizing student privacy higher than admin privacy. So I I do support the change of the language. What I have the concern with is the definition of a remote location.
Dr. Din, and here he is.
I'll simply just make the comment that anytime that you're using any of these modern platforms, whether it's Zoom, WebEx, Google Meet or whatever, you are always connecting to an internet-based connection. So whether that is here in the building or whether that is across the country, it doesn't really matter. They're all the same technology.
David, is there any potential for it inside the building for some secured closed circuit?
We could. Yes, sure, we could do that inside the building.
So I I think that would be to Ms. Ms. Owens, to your closed circuit is a possibility inside the building that does not get onto the web. That that's, I mean, it's the only way I think you can say with any 100-degree certainty, if we don't put you out into the web, you know, people can't get to you. We'd have to do a closed circuit. It would be a completely internal thing, and we'd have to investigate the cost of that.
And the problem with the phone is we don't know who's sitting next to you if you're not in front of us. And that's my point. It could be. No, you said a telephone remote. Well, your hand was not raised, so you are now, yes. But just a second.
My hand has been raised for about the last 20 minutes.
You are Mrs. Manning. We're just still with.
There it is.
Mr. Din was responding to Ms. Owens' follow-up question.
Actually, it's, yeah.
Okay. So are so now Mrs. Manning.
Mrs. Manning?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
So I I'm confused because what Ms. Lanetti said was the substitute motion isn't what I heard Ms. Melnick say was the substitute motion. And there are and then Ms. Melnick in her comments said that she was going to support the bylaw as it's written. But I don't have a copy of what the bylaw is as it's written right now, and there are many different changes in the bylaw. So I would like to move that we refer this back to committee for the committee to work on it and bring us a recommendation as as Ms. Weems was saying is the role of the committee. So I would like to move that we send this back to committee to work out these issues.
If I may, Mrs. Lanetti, is we're all for those of us looking at it to speak to Mrs. Manning's point, what's in black is the present language, correct?
Yes. And the reason Mrs. Melnick is having to do it the way she is is because there are so many other amendments in this this particular presentation of the bylaw. So she had to she her substitute motion is to strike the recommended language so that C five will only read as it appears, which is the bold of language. So anything that but the difference is, and I think I think it's for whatever reason, the word not is not underlined. That should be underlined in here. So she says, school board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session meeting.
And that's the present language before any of these amendments were it.
With the word not in there, which isn't underlined in this recommendation. And the reason she's not she had to say it that way is because she's not amending any other recommendations in this bylaw. So she wants to, because what would happen if you vote on her bylaw, you still have to her amendment, you still have to go back to the main motion on the amendment on the bylaw itself, depending on what results as a matter of her amendment. So she's not totally throwing up the whole recommendation of the bylaw. She just wants this section changed before you vote on the bylaw.
So shall we?
The appropriate appropriate move right now is to ask for a second and then discussion.
Second on that, I think we can quickly.
Vote on that once a second is proposed. A second, Mrs. Hughes.
The motion on the floor at this time, which is a prior motion, is is Mrs. Manning's motion to send it the entire bylaw back to the PRC to look or come back with another recommendation on how to handle remote participation in closed sessions. Is that correct, Mrs. Manning?
Okay, all in fit all in favor of returning this to the PRC committee? Show a raised hand, please. Zoom, anybody Zoom, we're following Zoom. All right, all opposed? Please show a raised hand. Chairwoman, right, can you just have everybody do the in favor of first? Because they put their hands up too quick, so we just need to re-vote. And those in favor of the substitute motion by Ms. Manning, please raise your hand. To return this to just return this committee. Policy. Please show a raised hand. And wait until you're instructed to do otherwise, please. Thank you. Now, all opposed to 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 the motion. Wait, wait, hold on a moment. All opposed to the motion to return to the PRC committee, kindly raise your hand.
Did we already vote to send this back to the committee?
That's what we've we've asked for the noes now, Mrs. Holtz. Those of us voting no are I'm asking for a raised hand for anybody voting no. So how do you vote, Ms. Holtz?
My audio is static. I can't understand. I vote yes to support Ms. Melnick's amendment.
That's not what we're voting.
Right now, we're voting on the motion to send it back to the committee.
I already voted, I voted no.
The clerk has noted that, it looks like. So, Madam Clerk, what is the voting tally? So we have three eyes to send it back to PRC, which is in Ms. Manning, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Owens. There are eight noes in Ms. Rice, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, and Ms. Riggs and Ms. Weems.
But that returns you to the motion on the floor, which is to amend the recommendation as it's in the agenda package so that C five would read, school board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session meeting.
Okay, does anybody that need that repeated one more time before we vote on this this substitute motion?
This is Vicki Manning. I'd like to ask to have
Writing, please. By Ms. Melnick on what her motion is.
On Monday, February 22nd at 4:56 PM, do you have that in your email?
Yeah, but what what her email said
Was that was not consistent with what was made by the PRC. It says, recently, the policy committee met and submitted proposed changes under remote participation that reads, school board members may not participate from a remote location. And then she goes on to give her change, but that's not what the recommendation said. So that's one of the reasons why I just wanted to send this back to PRC, because I'm thoroughly confused. So if I could have in writing exactly what we're voting on on the language that Ms. Melnick is proposing, rather than our attorney, what Ms. Melnick is specifically proposing, the changes could be, if I could get that in writing before vote, and I believe our bylaws allow that to occur.
Language, because if it is, I can send it to her very quickly. School board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session meeting.
Period.
That is your language for that section.
That is correct. And that's the way it was written to begin with.
Mrs. Manning, I'm going to just send you that in an email. Dave, how about I just send it to the whole school board? So anybody who wants to look at it can look at it. Kami, what's the?
It's C five under bylaw 136.
Amendment to C five to read. Okay.
So Ms. Ms.
All right, there it goes.
Maybe the ones that specify what the motion is rather than staff.
Here we go. I think my clarification was that, sorry, that she's not the substitute motion is only changing this section of it. I want to be clear that that's all you were voting at this time was to change that section. The rest of the recommendations are going to remain the same.
Because the policy as it's as it's written now includes the language that I want to keep, which is, school board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed meeting. That's the way it's always read. The PRC added some language after that first sentence, and that's the part that I'm opposed to. That's what I've asked to strike.
And I need to clarify that as written in your agenda package, the word not. No, I'm sorry, it is in there. The school board members may not participate from a remote location in C five reads, school board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session. What PRC added had originally intended to say was that they may participate. But as written in the agenda package, that is the original language.
She's saying, and you and I were working off the actual. Yes.
And and just for clarity, I am not clarifying the language for anybody. I looked at Mrs. Melnick, asked it after I repeated that. She nodded in the affirmative, so I've sent it at the request of the board to have it in writing. So you think you have in writing now, if you all would please look at your email, exactly what you what Mrs. Melnick has proposed, section C five of this bylaw, to read. So the the substitute amendment is that section C five of this bylaw would read. This is this is what I've shared in writing. School board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session meeting.
Correct. So can I ask for clarity? We're in effect voting for the 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 change, the the complete revisions of this bylaw.
You're modifying.
Yeah. With this modification.
She is asking before you vote is to change C five.
But but so people unders colleagues understand they are voting for the complete package.
No, no, no.
Not right now, we're just voting on this. Okay, and then we go back to vote on the by the full bylaw.
That's what I'm trying to clarify. All she's saying is before you vote, I want you to change the language in C five to or to read how it originally read. And then you will have to go back and vote on bylaw 136 with the other amendments. For C five.
And can you also remind us on bylaw requirements in terms of vote tally?
Two-thirds, it's a supplementary two-thirds. Because you have 11 of you here, you need two-thirds.
So even for this substitute motion, it's the same threshold?
Yes.
Which is how many people for the record?
It's seven. Yes, seven.
Even though we're technically not changing
Even though we're technically not changing the original bylaw. You're amending the proposed amendment. Okay, all right.
All right.
Fair enough.
So, all in favor of the substitute motion, which has been reiterated, one more time, "School Board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session meeting." All in favor of retaining that language, show your approval with a raised hand. And Madam Clerk, let me know when it's time to ask for nays.
You can ask for the negative votes.
All right, all opposed to the substitute motion, kindly raise your hand.
Chairwoman Ri, this is Jennifer Franklin. I'm going to abstain from this vote, because, one, I'm confused, and, two, I have not participated in a closed session yet, and I feel like I don't have a point of reference to make a good decision here, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Ms. Holtz, I just want to confirm, you are in the affirmative, because your hand is still raised?
Yes, yes, I did vote, I raised my hand.
Are we done with the nays before we get to the abstentions?
I support Ms. Melnick's amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Holtz.
Have you tallied the nays, Mrs. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I did. Okay, so we have-
And now we have, now we'll ask for the, you've noted the abstention?
Yes.
And the tally is?
We have eight affirmatives in Ms. Anderson, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Ri, Ms. Weems, Ms. Felton, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Holtz. We have three in the negative, in Ms. Hughes and Ms. Manning. Sorry, two in the negative, Ms. Hughes and Ms. Manning, and one abstention in Ms. Franklin.
Okay, thank you. So now that brings us, so the motion is approved.
You're back to your original motion, which is to approve bylaw 136. The change to it will be that it will read, C-5 will read, "School Board members may not participate from a remote location in any closed session." The rest of that, everything else remains the same as it appears in the agenda package.
All right, so now we're voting on the- We're about to vote on the full bylaw, so a final opportunity for any question or comment. Yes, ma'am.
On, under number two, Ms. Lynetti, personnel matters.
Which number two?
Number two, personal matters, prevent physical attendance. Two, and then B. It's just, it's just a little, little error, I think, on one word. And under B, it states, see the word "and"? It doesn't read right. "The Chair will not, will note during the meeting the specific nature of the personnel matter, the remote location from which the School Board member is participating." Should we keep the word "and," and the remote location?
The School, the Chair will note during the meeting the specific nature of the personnel matter and the remote location from which the School Board member participates.
So, "and" is crossed through?
No, it should not be, because the Freedom of Information Act says, when you are only for personal reasons staying out, you have to say the reason why and where you're located.
So should we, I'm just asking, should we put the word "and" back in there? Should it be crossed through? Because on mine-
Is it crossed in, okay.
It's crossed through. So can we put that back in there, the word "and"? Does anybody have objection for that?
I think just to be clarified, you just need to make a motion to-
I make a motion that we, that we put the word "and" back in there, so that it will read, "The Chair will note during the meeting the specific nature of the personnel matter and the remote location from which the School Board member is participating."
I second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this motion is only to amend this section under two, personnel matter, prevents physical location, small b, and it would then read, "The Chair will note during the meeting the specific nature of the personnel matter and the remote location from which the School Board member is participating."
Correct.
That is all you're voting for at this time.
This is just an amendment to add the word "and" back in there.
All right, all in favor, raised hand, please. Scrivener change.
So we are voting to add the word "and."
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have 10 in the affirmative with Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Weems, Chairwoman Ri, and Ms. Melnick voting in the affirmative. We have Ms. Manning voting in the negative to Ms. Anderson's substitute motion to add the word "and" back in.
Thank you. So now-
Returns to your main motion, which is to approve bylaw 136. You have had two amendments to this. One is the one we just voted on, on 2B, to add the word "and." The other one is C-5, which returns the language to what it, how it originally reads, which means there is no remote participation. That is the motion on the floor with the two amendments that have been adopted into this. That's the motion that you will be voting on at this time, is to approve 136 with those two amendments to them.
So is everybody comfortable moving forward with a vote right now?
I'm sorry, so what if- And I apologize for asking this, but what, so we are voting to approve both of the amendments, but we, what if we don't agree with, what if we don't agree with one, but we agree with the other?
Voting on the bylaw as a whole, so it's your, your personal decision whether to vote yea or nay on the present version, if that helps.
With the amendments.
Further explanation, please say so.
I guess I don't need further explanation on how I vote, or what I am supposed to do, but just-
I'm making sure you're clear on what-
Voting on the complete bylaw with the original language about the closed session. That was approved moments ago.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so bylaw 136, as proposed. All in favor, raise hand, please.
Donnie Holtz votes yes.
Thank you, Ms. Holtz.
And Madam Clerk, let me know when we're ready for-
You can go for the-
Okay, so now all opposed, please show a raised hand.
Madam Clerk, this is Jennifer Franklin, I- Again, I'm going to abstain on this vote as well.
Okay, Madam Chair. We have nine votes in the affirmative with Ms. Anderson, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Ri, Ms. Weems, Ms. Felton, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Owens. We have one in the negative with Ms. Manning, and we have one abstention with Ms. Franklin.
So the motion has passed, thank you.
Okay, that is going to take us to bylaw 139. 139 has to do with agenda planning and notice.
Okay, allow me for the motion and the second. Okay, so a motion to approve 139 for the purpose of discussion. Mrs. Anderson, a second, Mrs. Riggs. Okay, thank, please proceed, Mrs. Lynetti.
139, as brought to you the last time we did this, and it mirrors what we were trying to do in 128, having to do with the Agenda Planning Committee. Had significant discussions about this in the PRC. There were some recommendations that had come forward from certain members of the PRC, had looked at it, and the suggestion, you'll see a significant rewrite since the last time you saw it. And they're, so this time, we would be almost completely rewriting this section. Now it would be agenda preparation and notice. Section A would have to do with agenda items, and this is where the significant change for your purpose. "The Chair and Vice Chair, along with the Superintendent or Deputy, shall plan a proposed agenda for School Board meetings. Once a tentative agenda is approved, the School Board Clerk will send the agenda to the School Board members five calendar days prior to the meeting or within a reasonable time for a special meeting. The Superintendent and the School Board Clerk may develop agenda planning procedures and timelines." Then there would be a subsection. First subsection would be, one, development of the agenda. "The quarterly forecast, along with prior direction from the School Board, will be considered in developing the agendas for regular meetings. When developing an agenda, the Chair and Vice Chair will take into consideration the time available for all proposed topics, the preparation time necessary for presentation, and other relevant matters before setting the final agenda. Items should not be placed on the action agenda without consideration being given to providing adequate public notice." Second subsection, "School Board Member Requests for Agenda Items." "School Board Members May Present to the Chair or Vice Chair a request to add matters to the agenda. If the Chair and Vice Chair determine that the requested agenda item requires more time, preparation, or other considerations before being added to an upcoming agenda, this requesting School Board Members will be informed and reasonable efforts will be used to resolve if or when the request can be placed on an agenda. A School Board Member may make a motion at a meeting to add an agenda item, and the School Board will vote on the agenda." The section, section after that was, third section would be, three, "Requests for Patrons from Agenda Items." Patrons of the School Division do not have a right to add or remove items from an agenda. However, patrons may submit a request for the School Board to consider adding an agenda item. Such request should be sent to the Chair in writing. The Chair and Vice Chair, along with the Superintendent, will make a determination regarding the request and inform the patron of the decision. No appeal, such determination shall be allowed." Then we, the following sections are just a reorganization where they were for. Four, the business at School Board Meetings is restricted to the agenda. Five would be published agenda. And once the agenda is published, the Chair may authorize changes for good and just cause. The School Board must affirm such changes by majority vote of members present at the meeting. The section, section, section B just deals with the annual organizational meeting, clarifying that the outgoing Chair and Vice Chair will plan the agenda for the annual meeting. If the Chair or Vice Chair no longer on the School Board, it will fall, if the Chair is no longer on the School Board, it falls to the Vice Chair. If the Vice Chair is no longer on the School Board, it will fall to the most senior School Board member on the School Board alphabetically, so that's just a clarification. And all we did was move down the clarification of subsection C would be, "Notice of School Board Meetings and Agendas and the Supporting Documentation." We just reordered them. So the significant change you see from the last time you had was, rather than try to form a standing committee that would then be subject to Freedom of Information requirements and all the other agenda planning procedures, there would be a regular group of the Chair and the Vice Chair working on this. This still allows the School Board to ask that matters be put on the agenda. It also allows the School Board to have the final decision on an agenda. Significant conversations that the rest of the PRC members could discuss with you, but this took us a while to come to, and this was a final recommendation of the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. Questions or comments, please? And our Zoom participants are okay? All right, then, please show your, we did take the motion on second already, so please show your affirmation with a raised hand on bylaw 139, Agenda Preparation. And please let me know, Madam Clerk, when you're next up.
We have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, that's-
Thank you, Mrs. Lynetti. And, all right, information. Ms. Crystal Pate, interim financial statements, January 2021. Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Sure. Good evening, Chairwoman Ri, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Members, Dr. Spence. As of January 31st, our overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year, as illustrated in this first graph. As mentioned last month's presentation, our current projection of state revenue, based on the state's projection of the March 31st ADM and the Governor's proposed amendment that reflects a surplus in state revenue of approximately $11.5 million. We did reach out to our demographer to take a look at the ADM at the end of January, and we ran that figure through that Calc tool, and we used that projected ADM, which is a little lower than what the state's projecting, by about 310 students. And so that comes out to be a projection around $10 million as a surplus. So we just want to give you a range of what we're kind of looking at. Farrell mentioned to you in workshop, House and Senate budget bills are in the Conference Committee. That applies to both current year and, and the budget year that you're working on to approve. So in order to understand that full impact of those changes that might come out of that Conference Committee, we are also relying on the Calc tool from the Virginia Department of Education in order to see what projected payments might look like once that session is closed. Federal revenues are showing a favorable trend as of the end of January. Year-to-date, we have received approximately $1.4 million over our budget, and that's mainly due to our Impact Aid payments. Our other sources of revenue through the month of January are still showing a lag, and again, that's mainly due to the decreases in revenue in areas such as the sale of our salvage materials, reduction in the summer school tuition, facility rentals, and the stop-arm enforcement program. This next graph shows that sales tax receipts are an acceptable level. Year-to-date, through January, we are approximately $1.6 million higher than the same time last year. For February, we are showing an increase in the sales tax receipts from February of last year of approximately $604,000. Our last graph shows the expenditures and encumbrances trend is acceptable at this point in the fiscal year as well. So that concludes the presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments, colleagues?
Ms. Manning has her hand raised.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Manning, please.
Thank you, Ms. Pate. I just had one question on, I'm going, document here. Under School Grants Funds, on page, on B-12, on the expenditures and encumbrances, it has a line item for reserve for contingency of $3.7 million, and I was just wondering what that is.
When the budget is developed, in order for us to have, not to go back to the School Board City Council, sometimes those original budget awards or carryovers from prior year grants that we are allowed to carry over, those amounts change, and so we budget a contingency in order to bounce off those budgets within that fund. And so that just allows us to make the appropriate budget transfers to reflect the actual awards that we may receive or any changes in the carryovers as we close out the fiscal year, prior fiscal year. Does that make sense?
Not really. Maybe if you could explain to me what the $3.7 million is going to be used for?
That's not probably the total amount, because that gets adjusted throughout the year. So when we close the fiscal year, for example, we're closing probably end of the month of August before we do that. So we put out, and when they do the budget development process that Farrell's going through right now, he does an estimate of what those carryover figures will look like, or whatever new awards we expect to get for the current fiscal year. So those numbers are estimates, and that contingency is just a budget. It's an estimate of what we might need in order to make those budgets whole as we close out the year, prior year, and we know what those actual carryover balances are. and also what we make sure that those actual awards that may be received, what we would need to put in there for, to balance all those awards. So it's just within the fund. Okay, Farrell's going to talk.
And that, this process was set up between the schools' budget and finance staff and the city budget and finance staff, and with concurrence, at the time, with the city manager who's since retired, because we had a situation in one particular year where we didn't have enough appropriated in a specific grant fund to cover immediate expenses that had started to occur July 1. So the city manager was put in a position where he had to give administrative support and had to go to Chairman, Vice Chairman of the City Council to get approval without having to go to the full City Council. So this is just a process we've used since then, just in case we run into that kind of thing again.
Okay, so it's almost appropriating a contingency for school grant funding. I guess what I'm confused about is grants have to be used in specific ways. But I guess maybe you're saying that there are grants that can carry over from year to year, and we just have an account where we can put that money? Is that accurate?
There is an appropriation for that fund. So we, when we go, like Farrell said, when we go to City Council and we want to have an appropriation for that fund, and that includes in a contingency, so we stay within that appropriation as we have to legally do. There are grants, especially some of our Title Grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, they will carry over. We, at any given time, can have three Title I Grants rolling at the same time. But that contingency is for the budget piece. It has, those grants do have to be spent on certain things, but that's the actual expenditure side. That contingency is for the budget side to make sure that those budgets reflect the actual awards that we have been, that we have been awarded, whether it's carrying over from prior year, what's remaining, or whether it's new grants or, or adjustments to new awards for that current year. So there's a, there's a budget side, and there's an expenditure side.
All right, maybe we can just talk offline to help me understand it a little bit better. Thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Manning? All right, anybody else?
We have Ms. Franklin.
Mrs. Franklin.
Not unmute for some reason. Okay, okay, I, I am so sorry. I know that this is a new Board Member question again, but I wanted to just ask Mr. Hunsaker. I mean, it just seems odd to me that we are, we are waiting for the House and Senate to come out of Conference Committee, give their recommendations, but we're proposing a budget that might change or an increase or, you know, a raise, so to speak, that, that might change based on what they come, they decide, once they come out of Committee. Is, is that customary that we, that we have to wait on them, and then we've already decided? Because that seems somewhat backwards to me, because that means that we would have to come back and revote on it after they've decided on what they're going to do for a raise. So let's just say that, for, for whatever reason, we would have voted for a 3%, then they came back with a 4% raise, we would have had to come back and vote to increase at that point? Is, is that correct?
You've made some, some excellent observations. This, this process is, is really dictated by the, the city, and it is related to the city's schedule of, of when they have to adopt a budget and when they require the School Division to submit our budget to them. So we, and, and we've been doing this for 20-something years or more. So it, it's out of our control. It, it could seem to be backwards, as you've indicated, but it, it's, it's, it's required of us to meet the city's schedule. That's why next week is a special Board meeting, because we have to give our budget to the city by a certain time, like the second week in March. So we couldn't wait to the second week in March, when you have a normal Board meeting, for you to act on the budget. We had to set a special meeting in the budget calendar for you to approve the budget. So it, it's just required of us. We have really no say.
So I guess that we're. If we vote on the 5% raise for everybody, then it, it's safe to say that we are good to keep, keep that position and not have that change. Is that correct? Because it, it sounds as if the Committee would be voting anywhere from 3% to 5%.
It's, it's just, we have to present a School Board budget to the City Council that's a balanced budget. And, and we, we make the recommendations about what we believe should be in that budget. That the kind of things can, that can change that is, as we've said, is the, is, is the state budget. Now it's coming after the fact. If there are things in the state budget that require us to do something different from what we're proposing, then we would have to go back and amend the budget with the City Council. There's a process for that. We have done it in the past. So it, it's, it's just a part of the process.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if, if the Committee, the, the House and Senate Committees were just behind because of the pandemic, or if this is typically what happens. But I guess it, it just is what happens every year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's right, Ms. Franklin. It, this does happen every year, and you can anticipate every year. Sometimes we'll get the Calc tools relative to the House and the Senate budgets. By the time we get to budget adoption, this year it doesn't look like we're going to have. We thought we might have them this week, but we were told, actually this morning, that we wouldn't have them this week. But generally speaking, even though we have those Calc tools, it gives us an opportunity to make a good prediction of what that state budget's going to look like and give you our best thinking, and then we ask you to adopt on that. But then, yes, you, you typically won't see an adopted budget out of the General Assembly before our deadline for getting a School Board adopted budget. And in, in years past, I think one year, we didn't see one until August or September when I was here. So we can go well into even, into the next school year before we have to make those adjustments. But fortunately, as Mr. Hunsaker noted, we do have some processes for making those adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Franklin. Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Paye.
Thank you.
That brings us to our new Algebra III course, which has some of us intrigued. Hello, Mr. Delaney.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. This evening's presentation will involve a recommendation to add Algebra III as a course offering for students at the Landstown High School Governor STEM Academy. The purpose of this course is to provide an additional pathway for Governor STEM students to gain access to the calculus sequence of courses. Algebra III is specifically designed for students who have completed either Algebra II or Algebra II Trig and need to further develop their skills prior to enrolling in Math Analysis. This course will focus on reinforcing key mathematical concepts, such as application-based problem solving, the exploration of various topics in algebra, statistics, and geometry that are required to be successful in an advanced course. During the current school year, all Governor STEM Academy freshmen were scheduled in an interdisciplinary course of Algebra II Trig and Technology Foundations. This pathway allows for students' mathematical skills to be strengthened, therefore allowing them to go further in their pursuits of STEM careers and to be college-ready. This slide depicts two pathways for the academy cohort. Pathway 1 is designed for students that have achieved success as freshmen in the Algebra II Trig course. They will move on to Math Analysis next year, AP Calculus AB as 11th grade students, and AP Calculus BC as seniors. Pathway 2 includes the addition of the Algebra III course. The Algebra III option is designed, again, for students that would benefit from an additional year focusing on algebraic concepts in order to be best prepared for the pre-calculus focus of Math Analysis. Following completion of the Algebra III course as 10th grade students, Governor STEM Academy students will enroll in Math Analysis as 11th graders and enter calculus during their senior year. Currently, 40 Governor STEM Academy students have been identified as needing this additional level of support. Dr. Paula Johnson, Principal, Landstown High School, and Rachel White, Academy Coordinator, have a teacher prepared to teach the course. Secondary Math Coordinator, Thomas Coker, will continue to collaborate with Landstown High School through the implementation process. The addition of this course will have no budgetary impact. We will be using a combination of MathSpace, iXL, and other open educational resources to support the teacher and students. Thank you for your time this evening and for, and for your consideration of the addition of this course. With me this evening is Governor STEM Academy Coordinator, Rachel White. We'd be more than glad to answer any questions you may have.
Colleagues?
No, I, I, I just applaud, I applaud that extra step because I would not have been a candidate for Pathway 1 or Pathway 2, but I would have def, I, I just love that, that additional step. So, and obviously, it's necessary with 40 students.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead. So, why just, why Landstown specifically? And how widespread is this course nationwide?
Nationwide, I don't have the answer for that. It's not used predominantly throughout the state of Virginia. Why Landstown High School? They identified that need because of the cohorting of their freshman students this year in Algebra II Trig. We do foresee that this will extend to all other high schools as an option as students begin to schedule. As you know, we're sitting in the end of February. Part of that process is already taking place. Many of the high schools have not been able to do the forward work that Ms. White and Dr. Johnson have had, as, as a result of the academy need. We do see this pushing forward to provide that access for all students, not maybe next year, but in following years. Just to give you some statistics, students that typically are in Algebra II, less than 5% move on to Math Analysis. So we're, we're looking forward to this bridge course to provide that opportunity for kids to develop that confidence to move forward. Traditionally, those kids may move on to a Probstat Trigonometry course, and then into AP Statistics. So this addition will allow that pa, we use the term often, pathway, will allow this opportunity for students that have an interest in engineering not to, not to be kind of moved out of that pathway in their ninth-grade year, which is where you're seeing that impacted with ninth-grade students taking Algebra II Trig.
No, thank you. It all makes sense. It's, it's very interesting, having a mother who taught high school math 30 years, and myself who did many years of tutoring, you know. And, so I guess in an out, because I know it's already decades old, but we introduced like a two-part, like algebra over the course of two years. This is kind of along those lines, but not, not quite, because that's just extending a single course where this is adding and more of a, and it's not even, it's not remediation. That's not the right word.
It's an advanced-level course. Algebra III, the other component of that, it is an advanced-level math course that a student can achieve as well.
Right, so it's new material, but reinforcing those concepts that they need, correct?
Yeah, we believe will develop individual student confidence that they can achieve in that pre-calculus Math Analysis course.
Thank you, Ms. White, too. I, so you were, do you want to share any comments about your role in, in all of this? And, and maybe your staff, too? How we got to this point?
So this is my second year serving as the Academy Coordinator at Landstown, and we just identified a need for a mathematical pathway, given that we are STEM. And this need is basically for our Academy students to strengthen versus derail their confidence and ability with mathematics. As taking over the, over these two years, I just noticed that they were all over the place mathematically. I had seniors in Algebra II Trig. I had students that were struggling through Algebra II Trig, and so we decided that we needed to really create a solid foundation, but then also create a bridge for students that needed deeper, more application-based before Math Analysis. And the two teachers that are teaching the freshmen this year actually approached me with it and said that we need this, we need these for our students that don't necessarily have a B or an A. They're bright students. They just need that extra level to go deeper with the algebra.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson's next, and I don't know which of these two, you, you want to stick with Ms. White or Mr. Delaney?
Uh, well, whoever feels comfortable in answering, either one of you. You indicated, Mr. Delaney, that, that, that this is something that you think may grow forward. And, and so I want to know if you have reached out to any other principals across the division to find out if any of them are interested in partaking of this for next year as well? Because to me, it seems like if we, if we want to encourage students to go on to Math Analysis, that this might be something that other principals may want to partake in as well. So have you reached out to other principals to find out if they're interested in doing this next year as well?
When I was at a meeting last week with principals and let them know that this presentation was going to occur this evening around Algebra III, and that was specifically, we were moving it forward from a Landstown initiative. But we do anticipate there could be some calls to see how they can pursue it. Obviously, there's staffing implications. Do they have a teacher who's ready to teach it? They are beginning to do their master schedules and give the course offerings to students. So there, we may field some calls that they would like to do it. Obviously, if they do, that option would be provided. We just feel more confident that Landstown has done a lot of the legwork, has worked with a teacher that's bought into the program. Thomas Coker has worked very closely with them. He's our math coordinator. That it makes sense for a year to let it kind of flush out out of Landstown High School so schools can learn from their experience. But I could foresee some asking me about their potential to do that and us trying to help them through that process.
Okay, so, so this, this vote tonight, to do this, might.
Information.
Might, oh, all right, it is information. Might, oh, all right. It is information. But it, it could, it could be, it could maybe cause some principals to call you and say, hey, we'd like to have this next year as well.
Sure.
Is that correct?
And we're, yes, and we're, we're getting a lot of that discussion. You, you hear Ms. White's passion as an academy coordinator, and she's doing wonderful things at Lanstown, as many of our academy coordinators are, and you've seen over the last year how many new courses we're bringing to try and diversify the pathways that are there for students. And so we, we foresee that happening. We are involved in the Virginia Mathematics Pathways Initiative that's going on at the VDOE right now. Thomas Coker is on that committee. So there's a lot of discussion across the state around how are we reimagining the mathematical experience for all students.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add to that. It's, I mean, I certainly recognize that there's more of a cluster of students at an academy such as the STEM. But if we have pockets of students elsewhere, now that we've had a year of virtual teaching going on, I mean, these are the, the possibilities moving forward. It might just be five students at, at one of our other comprehensive high schools, but they don't necessarily have to be denied this opportunity because of a virtual connection or something. So, right, this will all be part of the discussion, I'm sure.
Those, those conversations are taking place right now, in terms of those opportunities with school counseling and so forth.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you both for joining us tonight and for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lanetti, back again. Okay, so before you get upset, this is going to be easy, so. All right. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Camille Lanetti, School Board Legal Counsel. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'm bringing on the information agenda. There are eight policies that we're going to type. But before we get really upset about this, six of those policies we're going to recommend be collapsed into one policy. So let me go through this, because this may make... We're going to try to be efficient. Policy 3-1, this is the first one in your business and non-instructural operations area, talked about criteria. Mr. Hunsaker met with us and pointed out that most of these policies we had not looked at since 1993. Some of them didn't make a whole lot of sense. Some of them weren't necessary. We have a Business Services Manual, which guides a lot of how the operational stuff is done. Much of this stuff appears in that. It's not a regulation. It is a protocol book that is used regularly by the, the school administration. So his recommendation was that we didn't need a lot of these, but after talking about it, we decided on the recommendation in the Policy Review Committee to try to collapse these. I'll try to explain to you where they are. In Policy 3-1, the first section, Financial Management, that would roughly remain the same with some minor scribbler changes. We would be adding to A6, a paragraph that says, "The superintendent designated will maintain a continuing balance of the various budgetary accounts and submit a monthly financial report covering the school division's physical actions. The school board will review the financial condition of the school division on a monthly basis at a regular school board meeting." That's what you normally do. This language comes from what is currently in Policy 344, which will say is number four on your agenda cover sheet for financial report. So we would just be moving, this is a summary, into Policy 31. Under B, which is non-instructural operations, again, we just do some minor changes on there, that's basically scribbler changes. Section C, we would be adding. Section C is Systems of Accounts. If you look on your agenda cover sheet, Systems of Accounts falls under Policy 341. We would be collapsing 341 back here into 31. So Systems of Accounts would read, "The superintendent shall ensure the implementation of the approved system of accounting of all monies exclusive of the PTAs, booster clubs, and related organizations collected for any purpose within the school division." If you'll notice, subsection D that we're recommending is surety bonds. That is Policy 347, which is the fifth one on your agenda cover sheet. It would then read, "Surety bonds in order to protect public funds with school board and the school division, each employee who is responsible for large sums of money and/or is required by law or regulations to be bonded shall be covered by a surety bond. The bond shall meet the requirements of applicable law and regulation or be commensurate with the responsibility of the employee's position. The school board will pay for the cost of surety bonds." So that's a modification, but brought over from 347. Section E would be petty cash funds. If you notice, that is Policy 349, which is number seven on your agenda cover sheet. "The superintendent is authorized to establish one or more petty cash funds, not exceeding $2,000. In accordance with applicable law, all expenditures from a petty cash fund shall be supported by receipts." Section F is insurance. This is Policy 348, which is number six on your agenda cover sheet. And it would read, "The superintendent designated is authorized to procure insurance policies and/or coverage, self-insure, and create risk management programs for the school board and the school division as allowed by law and regulation." Again, that would be Policy 348. And you'll see the legal references that support that in the addition. So coming out of the PRC, we decided, there was some talk about simply eliminating them, but there was some concern that we wanted to make sure that the public understood that we were following these concepts. So we're going to recommend that Policy 3-1 be amended to include those other policies. Are there any questions on 3-1? All right, easy. The next one we're going to go to is Policy 3-2. This is Ethics in Public Contracting. Again, I will note, you know, this was not, has not been reviewed since 1993. As you've seen before, some are very old policies and regulation bylaws. The practice was to include the whole statute, law, and regulation in that. You'll see a significant amount of this. Ethics in Public Contracting is a subsection of the Virginia Public Procurement Act, which has very strict rules on when we're dealing with public contracts and those individuals that are involved in either procuring the contract or managing the contract to have very strict rules on them. All we are recommending at this time is that you do some scribblers changes. And it would read, "The superintendent shall say that all employees of the school board engaged in the procurement of goods and services are aware of Article 4 of the Virginia Public Procurement Act entitled Ethics in Public Contracting." After that, we're going to recommend that you simply, we're updating the code sections that changed about 20 years ago, and then we will be taking out all the language on that. So that will remove approximately four pages out of your policy review manual, just leaving the current citations that are applicable. Are there any questions on Policy 3-2? Oh, here's where things get exciting. 341, we are recommending that it be deleted. 344, that it be deleted. Policy 347, let it be deleted. Policy 348, let it be deleted. Policies, that's what I'm on. Yeah, sticky fingers here. 340... Goodness. 349 and 353 would be, 349 is, all those are deleted because they have been incorporated into 31. 353 is Advanced on Expenses. This is an older procedure. With the advent of procurement cards and credit cards, there's very little reason anymore that we give advance money for that, but it can happen. The Business Services Manual deals with how we handle this, but under the current way we handle money, this is not a procedure that we have to use as much as we used in the past. So the recommendation is simply to delete this subsection on that. If it's needed, it's helped handled in the Business Services Manual, so there's no reason to have it. So that one policy is not incorporated into Policy 3-1. So on information tonight, those are the recommendations coming to you out of the Policy Review Committee. Are there any questions about any of those policies? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, standing committee reports. Any of our Zoom participants? Mrs. Weems?
Yes, we had the Quarterly SHAB School Health Advisory Board meeting the other day, and Mary Shaw, of course, was there and just briefed us on the update. Nothing new that we haven't heard. And then also, Dr. Smith will be working on the Be Well Assessment and some stuff coming down from the state, that we'll be working on that in the next few months as a committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Melnick?
The GRC Governance, Governance Board met yesterday, and the, the foundation side just raised a lot of money. So for anyone that participated in that event, it was fabulous, really fabulous. And on the governance side, they are working on a rubric for culturally responsive practices. And that rubric will be for teachers and administrators to help guide their plan for continuous improvement. And if anyone's interested in where they are at this point, I would be happy to share that information with you. It was, it was really amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance was essentially shared at the workshop, just for the new viewing public. The, the newest initiative of the committee is a board self-evaluation assessment tool, which will be coming forth with more information on later this spring. Anybody else? All right, then. That, that, this concludes our formal meeting. And we're just going to be taking a two-minute technical break to transition to the non-agenda portion of our meeting. And I do want to point out for the viewing public that once we hear from a small group of speakers, we'll, we will be resuming our workshop, which was suspended earlier this evening. And so the, the budget discussion will conclude, and then we'll be proceeding into reopening plan updates at that point. Thank you.